Let the records reflect that we're three minutes late at the start of this meeting. And we have an agenda, John, did you take a look at our agenda?
No, I didn't.
It's, well, the good news is you're on first.
Oh, okay.
We're not gonna make you hang out for this.
Let me give a little introduction here.
Yes.
I invited John in, John is a former director, do we say?
Superintendent.
Superintendent of the Delaware Watergate National Recreation Area for many years. And I asked him to come because we need some help with a problem that we thought had been solved by PennDOT, which was that two years ago, we got a grant from PennDOT, and I say we meaning Smithfield and Middlesmithfield, to pay for a very, very advanced computer state-of-the-art system that would synchronize all the traffic lights from I-80 all the way to Bushfield. It was about a three quarters of a million dollar grant. And Michael Brown and company then started all of the engineering on it. The engineering took over a year and a half, and we were ready to go out and bid it. We were advised by Michael Brown to hold off a while because there were too many other bids out there for different things. We were gonna bid it in spring of 2021. I think in June, we got a letter, an email from PennDOT saying, "This grant has been canceled."
I'm sorry, I don't wanna interrupt, but it didn't say actually canceled, but until further notice, the funds will not be available. The grant still stands, it's still at the place that we're, we're ready to go.
We're ready to go.
Yeah.
But it said we'd have to reapply, so I see that as a cancellation. You know, it's not like saying, "We're holding off for a while, but see us in a year or two." In a year or two, you could reapply, so I think that sounds like a cancellation to me.
It doesn't quite read that way to me, and, well, it's just a matter of semantics here. What the situation is.
Anyway, we're looking for a way to move forward. The engineer suggested one potential grant, which is called, what's it, a flak? You know, you know, that federal grant?
Assistance program.
Unfortunately, I don't think they even start looking at new applications for another year and a half yet. But it seems like maybe there are other ways around this. And the biggest question, or the biggest, let's say, beneficiary of this really is the park, because it's about 209, it's about terrible traffic problems, as you know, on 209, and especially in summers during the week, weekends, when there's so much traffic in the park. We're really the only way in and out from the south. And it seems like maybe in some way, joining with the park, there are ways to find federal funds or federal and state funds to get this thing going again. And one of the advantages, the engineering is done. The only thing it takes is the money, going out to bid and putting it in. And this, by the way, this system is one where it reads and creates a data file base of everything going on in the road every 15 seconds, 24 hours a day. So its ability to speed up traffic is pretty amazing. Anyway, we thought, you know, maybe you're the guy that worked with us to take over the grant writing order to be the advisor, and see if we can find a way to fund this payment.
Well, I'd be happy to help if I can. The park, or some federal entity, would have to be the applying, would have to be the applicant along with you. During the time that I was there at the park, I think we only had one flak grant, and it was for Dingman Township. They received, I can't remember exactly, $300,000 or $400,000 to work on the entrance to Cliff Park. They had retained ownership of the first mile or some half-mile. Which is, I think, something the former owners engineered, knowing that they would have to plow the road, and they would have to plow the entire road in order to turn around. It was pretty cagey that way. So I'm not sure that Dingman Township ever made use of the money. I know it was available to them. So, you know, moving forward, it would be probably advisable to talk with the superintendent, Sulu Jacobs.
I agree.
I know you're saying it has to be another year and a half or something, but time does go awfully fast with these projects. And also, in terms of this kind of project, the, I know there is an executive order that the President-
Let's play the meeting to the divide. Evening America. The Republican Party stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the records reflect that we're three minutes late at the start of this meeting. And we have an agenda, John, did you take a look at our agenda?
No, I didn't.
It's, well, the good news is you're on first.
Oh, okay.
We're not gonna make you hang out for this.
Let me give a little introduction here.
Yes.
I invited John in. John is a former director, would you say?
Superintendent.
Superintendent of the Delaware Watergate National Recreation Area for many years. And I asked him to come because we need some help with a problem that we thought had been solved by PennDOT, which was that two years ago, we got a grant from PennDOT, and I say we meaning Smithfield and Middle Smithfield, to pay for a very, very advanced computer state-of-the-art system that would synchronize all the traffic lights from I-80 all the way to Bushville. It was about a three-quarters of a million-dollar grant. And Michael Brown and company then started all of the engineering on it. The engineering took over a year and a half. And we were ready to go out and bid it. We were advised by Michael Brown to hold off a while because there were too many other bids out there for different things. We were gonna bid it in spring of 2021. I think in June, we got a letter, an email from PennDOT saying, this grant has been canceled.
I'm sorry, I don't wanna interrupt it. It didn't say actually canceled, but until further notice, the funds will not be available.
Well.
The grant still stands, it's still at the place that we're ready to go.
We're ready to go.
Yeah.
But it said we'd have to reapply, so I see that as a cancellation. You know, it's not like saying, we're holding off for a while, but see us in a year or two. It's in a year or two, you can reapply. So, I think that sounds like a cancellation to me.
It didn't quite read that way to me, and, well, it's just a matter of semantics here. What the situation is.
Anyway, we're looking for a way to move forward. The engineers suggested one potential grant, which is called a, what's it, a FLAT. You know, you know, that federal land.
Assistance program.
Unfortunately, I don't think they even start looking at new applications for another year and a half yet. But it seems like maybe there are other ways around this. And the biggest question, or the biggest, let's say, beneficiary of this really is the park. Because it's about 209, it's about terrible traffic problems, as you know, on 209, and especially in summers during the week, weekends when there's so much traffic in the park. We're really the only way in and out from the south. And it seems like maybe in some way, joining with the park, there are ways to find federal funds or federal and state funds to get this thing going again. One of the advantages, the engineering is done. The only thing it takes is the money, going out to bid and putting it in. And this, by the way, this system is one where it reads and creates a data-based base of everything going on in the road every fifteen seconds, twenty-four hours a day. So its ability to speed up traffic is pretty amazing. Anyway, we thought, you know, maybe you're the guy that worked with us to take over the grant writing order to be the advisor and see if we can find a way to fund this payment.
Well, I'd be happy to help if I can. The park, or some federal entity, would have to be the applying, would have to be the applicant along with you. During the time that I was there at the park, I think we only had one FLAT grant, and it was for Lehman Township. They received, I can't remember exactly, three or four hundred thousand dollars to work on the entrance to Cliff Park. They had retained ownership of the first mile or some half-mile.
Yeah.
Which is, I think, something the former owners engineered, knowing that they would have to plow the road, and they would have to plow the entire road in order to turn around. It was pretty cagey that way. So, I'm not sure that Lehman Township ever made use of the money. I know it was available to them. So, you know, moving forward, it would be probably advisable to talk with the superintendent, Sulu Jacobs. And.
I agree.
I know you're saying it has to be another year and a half or something, but time does go awfully fast with these projects. And also, in terms of this kind of project, the, I know there is an executive order that the president signed to kind of hurry along projects that would be shovel-ready if and when money's become available from the next care of that, that would go towards infrastructure, which I certainly believe would be the best way to, you know, get people working with infrastructure projects. We need them, we're probably twenty or thirty years behind everywhere, and we need in this country for bridges and roads.
Well, it seems like the kind of project that no one who's one of our elected representatives would not like.
Right.
You know, we're hoping that you can, you know, lead us or tell us what to do or, you know, become our consultant, maybe hire you as a consultant, whatever you want, and see if we can move this along.
I'd be happy to help. I have to really think about what I might be able to provide you in terms of value. I'm very experienced.
Okay, great, great.
No, I'm just kidding. But, you know, it, you know, the, I'd really have to look into maybe see your grants that you've already had approved. It's not surprising that the states, I mean, are all at a huge deficit as a result of this COVID-19 disaster. And, you know, I wouldn't be surprised that any projects at least get postponed until they hopefully receive some kind of federal assistance to keep them operating.
Again, that's a good point, even the local municipal assistance. And right now, none of that's coming down.
Right.
So hopefully, this can be rectified. Lot of work into it, as Robert said, it was a couple of years probably going into this.
A lot of money.
A lot, big-time money. Fortunately, the grant was awarded to both Middle and us, on this side of the county, by the way. Then you go up 611, and Stroud and Pocono also got a similar grant, and they're in the same situation we are. What Robert's saying really is that we are the gateway, we truly are the gateway to the, to the park. We fill it in, either via River Road or a good old 209, Semmer Bridge Road. And with the coming of the Smithfield Gateway, John, it's gonna be horrendous without this, this new system. And it's fascinating, because the light up in Marshes Creek will speak to the light down here just before you get on 80. And they control traffic that way. So, it's well worthwhile, any efforts we can do and try to get monies in some way. And FLAT was one mentioned that, that Robert had mentioned, excuse me. And if there's, if you see other venues, you would let us know, and we would get to work on those too.
Absolutely.
Yep.
So, the grant that you already have approved, the last light would be the one that Bushville Falls, Robert?
Well, that was the only light that we didn't get involved, because that was Lehman Township. For some reason, they didn't apply to us, but we always thought we'd just add it. But we could do it with the three townships.
Well, actually, that traffic light is owned by the National Parks Service.
Oh, wow, okay.
Yeah, because I remember, we had lots of discussions with PennDOT, they kept insisting we needed a permit, and the light is on federal property, it was built by federal money, and there was actually no need for a permit from PennDOT. They eventually said, please, let us give you a permit, so I said, okay.
Well, so much the better, like, we're dealing with federal highways as well as state highway and federal signals.
And the way the, the money for construction project roadwork in Delaware Watergate works is that there's a division in Virginia called the Eastern Federal Lands and Highways, and they handle all of the funding and the project design, and usually the project construction management. And the park has done very, very well with them in emergency situations, largely because most of the people that are senior in that organization have been project managers in the park at one point or another. So when we would call them and say, you know, the flood destroyed half a mile of 209 that's critical for all transportation, they would know exactly where it was. And they understood that, you know, 209, at least, you know, for the foreseeable future, is a part of the transportation grid here, and it is an important link. You know, eventually, the O-1 will be completed, and hopefully, 209 will just become a, you know, two-lane park road with, you know, when you're in the mood for taking a slow ride. Because the O-1 is gonna be so much bigger. And the reality is that almost everybody in those towns lives along the O-1, and nobody lives on 209, except for at the very end, just before Milford, there are houses on both sides just before you reach the bridge going into Milford. You know, one going up to what used to take you to the Mott Street Bridge, there's about four or five houses. And in the other direction, I think there's two on Milford Beach Road. But that's pretty much the entire list of private homes along 209, and there are no businesses either.
You know, while we're at it, talking about things we can do besides even this, another thing that I wish we could have some, let's say, greater monies available for is the bus service that runs through the park, that starts at, I think, the Mars Bus Station down here. And it's certainly something that we're very involved in, because it's tourism for us too, and it goes up through the park. It was suspended or canceled this year. The reason given was they couldn't fill up the buses because of social distancing. Well, if they don't have money for doubling the buses, how much money do they have? And is there more money available? And another thing I've always felt is that, and now we're in the near future, it's a great route for driverless buses, because those kinds of routes that are very predictable are where buses are being used on campuses and cities and so forth. So you can run more buses, you don't even need more drivers. But it's just something to look into, and for us, it's saying, okay, it's serving our beaches and our tourism as well. So we're interested in it.
Well, I agree completely. The Pocono Pony, which is a pretty small operation, you know, the Monroe County Transportation Authority reached Lamas and, I forget his boss's name, Eileen, I think.
Kathleen, maybe, Eileen?
Kathleen, yeah, she's not the one you usually talk to or see, so. But they've been spectacular partners, you know, from the very beginning. That was one of the things that I put the power line money into, was trying to create a sustainable bus operation in the park. And, you know, we would essentially pay for the costs, but Monroe County Transportation provided the buses and the drivers. You know, I think in the long run, for this area, it's a wonderful way to go. You see that in, like, the parks in Utah, the Grand Canyon, places where they've done this before. People, businesses and people really like the idea. Initially, they sometimes are resistant, but once they see, you know, while I'm waiting fifteen minutes for the bus, I buy a slice of pizza, and I get a soda, you know, and you can, if and when the schedule is consistent, which Monroe County, I think, has done a good job at, it can really be a boon. And it's really adds to sustainability, because in a place like this, it's not really the number of people. We're already handling five million people, it's the cars. If there's gonna be transportation problems, it's the cars. Buses can really make a big difference, and certainly a climate change, you know, adaptability issue as well. So I think there's so many ways you can approach this, through climate change, through, you know, all the things that you've talked about already. I don't know, the COVID is, you know, it seems like it's impossible to overcome that until we address that with some kind of vaccine, you know, the social distancing. I just don't see, those buses are so small to begin with. But the people love the bus carrying, the bicycles, the kayaks, the canoes.
Yeah.
You know, that's.
They get off at the visitor's center, and so we see quite a bit of traffic just starting there, originating there, and coming up River Road, along with the canoe and else.
And between your facilities and, I think, Middle Smithfield is, it has already, or it's just about to complete their library and community center on 209?
Their, Smithfield Library will now move to Middle Smithfield Township on 209, yeah.
Great. Yeah, that's nice. Very nice, good for you.
You go past it.
That's right.
And that's a good for us, we're losing it.
Well, and, you know, we all know, when you're canoeing, the greatest difficulty when you have your own canoes is having to have two cars, it's two different.
Get my bag.
Two cars big enough to carry canoes.
I'm used to the Pocono Pony for that. And kayaks, great.
Yeah, and it makes a big difference, and I would love to see that get back, get started again. But, you know, from what I know of Monroe County Transportation, they've been gung-ho about it all along. And they were succeeding in getting grants for their park from PennDOT.
Yeah, it wasn't multi-modal grants, John, but I've served with the Monroe County Plan and Commission with Jim. He was chair, and I was vice-chair for about three years. And a good part of our conversations were about transportation, the bus service, and everything else. They just had a situation where I just learned that they had two or three instances of a COVID-positive employees. And so they're going through, as we all are, going through a lot of stuff here. But with the help of someone, this hopefully should shake out, work out, and maybe we go into 2021 and keep them.
Well, one thing that I pushed for many years with very little success is the property at Fernwood. I always thought that parking lot would have made a tremendous multi-modal operation center.
Yeah.
You don't even need the buildings, just the parking lot. And, you know, Lehman Township has all kinds of desires and plans to increase the use of, you know, the general store there, for example, and they had a grant from DCNR to erect kind of a stage for people at, right at the back of that property where the old store is. But, you know, the issue with their plans, they did a lot of planning, but it all revolved around creating eight hundred new parking spaces. And I kept telling them that not in the business of cutting down forest, in the parking lot, especially when there's an empty one, that'll hold, you know, hundreds and hundreds of cars just a quarter mile away. And at that time, we had the Pocono Pony operating all the way up to Milford. So I don't know if you would have any interest in that property, I think it's for sale again, if I'm not mistaken.
The, the old store?
Yeah, the old store, well, actually Fernwood.
It's for sale again?
I think that, well, I've heard that, I don't know that for a fact.
Okay.
I think the.
The temple.
I think they fought off more than they realized that, in terms of, you know, most of the buildings there are probably completely decrepit at this point.
They fired it, helped either. Well.
Well, that's a good asset, the Pony is a great asset, and it's here. It's established, as you said, and it's, it's doing its job, which is still a viable asset to the whole community, the whole, really, to the whole county. But in particular, again, we talk gateway and, because I remember when that situation was going on, and I used to think to myself, where goes, there goes the Smithfield Township Gateway, it's moving up this fernwood. With the big signs that they're gonna have, and you're welcome to the, to the national park.
But the historic store, I believe, is also for sale now as well, because he hasn't been able to reopen. And I don't think, you know, he was a construction company, and I don't think he really had any understanding of how you operate a store in a restaurant. You would go in there, or you'd order a sandwich, they had a menu, and then somebody would write down everything you ordered, and then it would go to the next person, and they would ask you what it actually said. You know, and all they had to do was put a number next to each item on the menu, number six, you know.
Was this the Roost? Is that what it was called, the Roost?
Yeah, it was the Roost, yeah.
Oh, okay, yes.
Yeah, they were very nice people.
They were, they were a wonderful place to go.
Yeah, and they, you know, they were the first ones to solve the problem of how to deal with the township codes, because they, previous owners had allowed it to lapse and be out of business too long to be grandfathered in.
Oh, wow.
And, you know, basically, the town required a certain number of parking spaces, which he created. But in order to do so, he had to take down the actual, most historic part of the entire building. You know, which was sad for everybody, but, you know, they did find a way to open the business.
So what do you think's the next step here?
Well, most, most of the money, how much money are we talking about from PennDOT?
Three-quarters of a million dollars.
Three-quarters of a million dollars. And, you know, a matching grant from FLAT, you know, might be a few hundred thousand dollars. And, you know, I would have to know more about all of the projects, but it seems to me like the park should be approached, since they own that last traffic light. And maybe they, if they were smart, maybe they'd wanna add the traffic light at Lehman's Falls Road.
It would make so much sense, John, because again, this communication, it's not limited to distance at all. And it literally reboots every, less than a minute, and the communication is constant. And it would be such a, especially with our Smithfield Gateway, that would be, you wouldn't see people, River Road would be the only way they're coming in unless they come in in Jersey, they wouldn't be on it.
I may be wrong in saying three-quarters of a million dollars, because the engineering has already been completed. I'm not sure how much that was, but it's gotta be probably a hundred and fifty.
Oh, more than that, yeah. And that's a good point, Robert, but that was, we, that wasn't on us.
No, PennDOT.
The four municipalities that are involved, PennDOT covered that. So everything, everything was progressively fine, until this memo, I guess it was Christopher, was it?
Christopher May.
Yeah.
Yeah, our engineer.
And, and again, he's an engineer, he's a consultant with PennDOT, and they have their own engineers on it. Didn't cost us a penny right now. And we, there is a grant, and it calls for a match. And fortunate, well, fortunately, whatever.
Only twenty percent match.
It was a twenty percent match, but when you look at the cost, and you look at the cost too, I think Middle Smithfield, it was substantial, because they had more, more traffic signals than we did. But still, they are in it, and I have a feeling, and I'll tell you what, Rosemary Brown was a bit an integral part of this. If you remember our initial meetings, I think we all.
She started it.
She started, and we'd walk out of her office, shake her hand, say, this ain't gonna happen. And all of a sudden, yeah, so we felt fortunate, but as Robert said, what they, my impression is that it's there, we're right at the brink, all we wanna do right now, and they're gonna, they're gonna have the construction consultant do this themselves. They'll put it out for bid, they expect it, and they're all ready to go, what they need, what kind of stuff they need in the boxes, and all that technical stuff. So it's that close to going out and then, and taking bids.
It's shovel-ready.
Need the money, it's shovel-ready.
Shovel-ready.
But, you know, the park is sitting on a lot of money for the power line, and I don't believe they spent a penny since I left. They, I had established a small fund, because I wanted to see some of that money go to the township. And the, what we worked out was that any project that helps create access to the park, so we gave them eighty thousand dollars to Pike County for the Mott Street Bridge to get them started. Now, when the project went from a hundred and sixty thousand to a million and a half or something, I wasn't in a position to provide more. But we had also approved one for the town of Milford Borough to create access, because they actually have property right along the river, but you wouldn't know it when you're in Milford. And I don't think that that has ever moved forward. I think they moved, they changed to a different location where they wanted to do their work. And I don't know if the park, how much money they might have in that account, or what Superintendent Jacobs is intending to do with it. I know they're moving forward with the restoration of the wetlands over at Watergate in New Jersey, a thirty-two-acre wetland restoration.
It's gonna be, restoration, not, yeah, I thought that was a very sensible, a good thing to do.
Yeah, it's gonna be a wonderful project. So I know they are required to fund that, out of the money they have, and they're required, they're supposed to finish the cultural, historic landscape structures report. And that will, uh, sort of identify where they're gonna spend money on the historic properties throughout the park. Uh, they don't have enough money to do five or six or seven hundred properties. Um, they're gonna be able to pick some good ones that they can, uh, make, make them into something worthwhile for the population.
How about historic traffic lights?
Historic traffic, now that one's not that old, I put it in.
And these aren't even in yet.
But, but I, I know you, you know, that Gateway project is a massive project and you're gonna be subject to immense, uh, construction on the, the realignment of Highway eighty and the entrances and, um.
Oh, if that all comes together at the same time, it'll, it'll be a mess, it'll be a total mess.
I've, I've long said that the real solution for what's going on in Penns- uh, New Jersey now with a wall and what goes on over here with the realignment is a tunnel. To take all, through traffic, mainly trucks, um, out of the area completely, so that you don't have to worry about all this stuff.
I, I think some, something drastically is done and I, I don't see any long-term permanent solutions to the, the fact that Highway eighty goes through the water gap without, uh, I mean, forgetting about it's a national park, just the actual physical limitation, you know, that, they were, they did talk about some tunnel, bridge type of options, which of course they discarded. We remember back to the Tox Island Dam, they drilled down five hundred feet and couldn't find rock. Yeah, probably the only location in Pennsylvania that isn't rock three feet down. And I don't know how they, how they. But, uh, that was one of the issues I think they were running into again if they tried to do a tunnel or a bridge, uh, you know, the, one, one option, um, I had suggested when they, they did the public hearings for the Highway eighty, uh, expansion, maybe ten years ago, was that they looped to the south before they get here, and then this could continue being a, a Pocono, uh, highway. And something else would be a major, uh, interstate that's, you know, essentially a bypass for our township.
Yes, well, the, the one advantage of a tunnel is you don't have to buy land rights.
So, uh, I'd be happy to look into, you know, anything you give me about these projects, uh, you know, I probably should know more about the Gateway project, other than I'm not coming down that road for five years.
No, I don't think we are either. I, well, again, if everything just falls into place, it was going so well. Uh, a lot of money's gonna be put into, uh, widening, uh, tornine in that area. And, uh, ju- just easements on and off, egress and ingress. It, it just seemed that it was this close, and, and, but, quite frankly, now it's, it's, it's gonna be a situation where I don't know, I don't know when it's gonna begin or how long it's gonna take, John, but maybe by the time they get rolling, uh, things will be, will be in a better place.
Well, Mario was speaking at Cog Monday, uh, with the forecast of doom, that the, the state has no money, you know, and don't expect much, et cetera, et cetera, so.
But, I mean, this is a different situation than most of us are used to, but I used to tell my staff that that speech I got when I started on January first nineteen eighty. And I heard that speech every year after that, while our, our budget at the park service went from four hundred million to two and a half billion or three billion, you know. So yes, I mean, it is true, I mean, there's always constraints, but, you know, as long as, uh, you know, America keeps, uh, growing in GDP, there, there's gonna be money and it's, it's a matter of, you know, how the.
Of getting some.
Well, I will, uh, I will assure you that, that, that the trainees here at the table will, will get everything you need, John.
Okay.
Uh, we'll start with, uh, getting some stuff on Smithfield Gateway, maybe some projected timelines and, uh, and definitely the Green Light Go program itself. And, uh, we can give you what we've got, we, just maybe if you'd like to come in or we can just get it to you. And, and sit down, this Christopher May, by the way, he is, he's a consultant, he's not a PennDOT employee.
No, he's Michael Brown, he's an engineer with Michael Brown.
He is?
Yeah, which is one of the biggest, uh, engineering firms.
Well, that's what I just said, I mean, so, so it was a very nodal man, I've been at three of his presentations and every time we, we would leave, it, it sounded, sounded very good and positive. But having said that, maybe, uh, maybe even he can get a little synopsis of what's going on, I know he's been in touch with myself, uh, I'm Jacob and, and certainly Robert. Let's see what we can do.
Let's go forward.
Okay, well, like I said, I'd be thrilled to work for you, but I'll make sure whatever I promise you I'm gonna do, that it is valuable for you and that I'm able to accomplish something.
I know that.
I tell you what I, you know what I was doing, working with the townships and trying to improve ordinances. I also had been working with, uh, um, the Northern Appalachian Trail on trying to create a larger corridor. Um, you know, we anticipate the climate change, flora and fauna will wanna move north. And, you know, the Appalachian Trail is the, the migration highway that's already in place, wants to.
I see.
Make the connectivity. But I also worked, uh, for, uh, Equitrans, uh, Midstream Corporation on the Mountain Valley Pipeline. I was, uh, largely, um, well, I was part of the team that put together that recent voluntary agreement where the pipeline company has given twenty million dollars to the Appalachian Trail Conservancy, um, for land acquisition and for economic grants to the towns in Virginia, West Virginia. So this work would be different than what I've been doing, but not so different from what I did in the park.
Amen.
When I moved here, I thought I'd be working on wildlife issues, not on asphalt issues. You know, the stretch of two oh nine that the park owns, or the United States own, I think I spent during my time thirty-two million dollars on the road and the bridges, uh, you know, all of those bridges have been replaced, uh, but it's, it's a phenomenal amount of money and work that goes into these road projects.
I, I, I just wrote down from Milford yesterday, it's nice to see it, it's been repaid. I guess that happened this year, because it would used to be terrible.
Yeah, to stop the Monroe County line.
That's right.
John, thank, thank you, uh, you, you, uh, do, I, I must have, we must have cards of yours, do you have anything you can leave with this?
Sure, uh.
I know I've got, yeah, here, four different addresses, so.
Yeah, actually, I'm not sure I wrote it, because you guys know who I am.
Amen.
Oh, uh, yes, we do.
All right, let's start with the six five six oh eight seven six.
That's my number, and I, I have two cards here, I'm sorry I didn't bring them in. I wasn't really sure what the, you know, purpose of our meeting. And I'm glad to be here, it's been a long time since I, I engaged.
The last time I saw you here, you were, uh, you put together a group, a, a good group, and had a nice meeting there with a good turnout.
Right.
And I think I was running back and forth to this meeting and then I think we had negotiations with the union or something and it was kinda crazy.
Yeah, it's, uh, the, the, I had a Rock Hall project, I thank you for nominating me to represent you and, uh, you know, I, I just don't know what's gonna happen in the long run, it's clear that New Jersey does, has no intention of listening or stopping, but, uh, you know, they're, they're also working on the, uh, the money, you know, and, uh, uh, you know, Congressman Carrright and Congressman Dotheim are on the New Jersey side, they both asked for the money, not, you know, for, Congress can just put in a rider on it that says no money may be spent on this project. And that brings it to a conclusion.
And I'm, uh, urging that, um, we, we, we engage in environmental law for PA and NJ, um, to represent us, cause I think that's the only company, somebody who can lead this and then, um, we'll go to Chris Barrett and have a conversation with him about how to approach some of the resources here. But I don't wanna do that until we at least have a, a direction with a firm saying, okay, this is what we might need money for. I, I think it's gonna be a huge, uh, environmental, some person.
I, I had that conversation with Julia Summers from the New Jersey Highland Television and, uh, yeah, she was talking about in, in approaching the Environmental Law Center, somebody. And, uh, you know, with, uh, I, I know the Sierra Club over there in New Jersey is, is very influential and, you know, they're all out of sorts about the project and above, but.
And you got Adele.
And she's, you know.
And she's been fighting this from the beginning, this kind of, I think I've been on this maybe three, three and a half years, I can't remember. We started off.
Yes, she, uh, project, uh, uh, a solution in search of, uh, problems.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, John, thank you.
It's a pleasure to see you.
I'm, uh.
Good to see you.
All right, you too. Come back.
You know, yeah, you know, you know where you are, you need to stop and do some paperwork and research and just, I mean.
All right, I'll look up everything I've got to see what's relevant.
All right, and then if you decide you wanna, uh, hire me for something, you know, we just need to determine exactly what it is.
Some kind of parameter of what we really are shooting for.
I guess first step would be for you to get familiar with what's going on and, uh, so I'll, I'll send you what I've already got.
Okay. All right, thank you, John.
Okay, thank you.
See you, John.
Okay, moving right along, uh.
Okay, we do have, let's, uh, into our meet, we have, uh, minutes from the September twenty-second regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. And I believe, uh, they've sent out to us to take a look. Okay, so, uh, I'll make a motion, we approve them.
Second.
Yes, yes, yes.
Aye.
Uh, the next item is the motion to approve the distribution of the twenty twenty Volunteer Fire Relief Association monies in the amount of forty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars and ninety-three cents. Uh, this is, uh, a three-way share, Shawnee Fire Company, twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-two cents. The exact same amount for Marshall's Creek Fire Company. And four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-nine cents for Delaware Water Gap Fire Company.
I'll make a motion that we approve that distribution.
And I'll second that motion and, and, uh, when Robert comes back, we'll, I'm sure this will be unanimous. Uh, this next motion, uh, is a motion to approve transferring one year's worth of loan payments from, from our ESSA General Fund to First National Banks in Pennsylvania in the amount of twenty-six thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Actually, if you want to pull up talking about that in more, because in fact, there's a little bit of a date in fall, so is that?
There is, yes, there is. Well, yeah, we're not gonna, we're not gonna go any further with it. Now, Robert, we had, uh, we did, uh, motioned and we took a vote on, uh, uh, appropriations and monies to the fire companies and, and, and so.
Well, right now, you've got the motion and the second, you haven't voted yet.
Yeah, I'm just waiting for Robert to do that, Julia. Okay, so you're voting yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Okay, now we're in the, 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 I guess it's, uh, item C, loan payments to ESSA General Fund, um, in order to, um, uh, allow payment to First National Bank of Pennsylvania in the amount of twenty-six thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents, which would allow, uh, a, a, a monthly transfer for the year of twenty, two thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-four cents. Now, uh, that's a, a loan that was taken out, uh, and I guess the intent was to purchase the Marshall's Falls House?
Yeah, that's a five-year loan.
It's a five-year loan at two forty-nine, two point four nine. And generates it. So, instead of, uh, I guess, uh, we established an account, was it a money market fund and we put five thousand dollars into it? But at that rate, every, every month, we'd be running back to, to replenish it. So, uh, the idea came up to, to move that money totally for the year twenty twenty. So.
And I think that the totality of it would earn the, uh, I forget the specific interest rate, but that's, that's, I think, what Suzelle had mentioned.
Uh, I believe it's at point six.
Point six.
Point six? Okay. All right, so, uh.
They're gonna, they're looking away to give us a better rate, but, uh, the point six, they're hoping to get to point nine, who knows?
Okay, did, did.
So.
But if it won, then it, uh, she'll let us know, of course.
I, I'm, I'll make the motion to approve the transfer of one year worth of loan payments for ESSA General, from ESSA General Fund to First National Bank of Pennsylvania in the amount of twenty-six thousand, six hundred and forty-eight point eighty-eight, which comes to two thousand, two hundred and twenty point seventy-four per month.
And, and that, that will be, uh, uh, to, to enable withdrawal from our general fund to pay for this loan on a monthly basis, uh, and the mo- the loan is, is intent to, to go towards the purchase of Marshall's Falls House. So, we have a, a motion, Jacob is second. And I'm gonna say I'll favor, I'm against it.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried, two to one.
Uh, to follow up on this really quick, because I do have a bit of an update for the Marshall's Falls House. Um, I received correspondence from Brian Smith, um, and related to the HOP, specifically for the Marshall's Falls House. Um, PennDOT, um, they haven't said that they'll give us the HOP, but they have also said that if we don't have this property, we might not get the HOP. Um, so they're looking for some sort of settlement agreement or promise that we're going to purchase this property. Um, or they have said without saying that we're going to lose any chance we have of having this HOP.
What, who, did, did you get that in writing, Julia?
Yeah, yeah, like, I, I've seen.
Can you share that with us, uh, uh, you, you're, what you're saying is that we don't have an HOP, they're, they're gonna take, take a look at that, the grant?
No, no, that's not what I said, so do you remember how we received that? Do you remember how we all received that notification that the HOP has been sitting?
Certainly, uh, that was the second or third notification, actually.
So, what they need in order to submit that, um, Brian Smith reached out to me and asked that, and said basically, PennDOT is looking for some sort of promise that Smithfield is purchasing this property. Uh, because obviously we haven't closed on it at this point, so they're looking for some sort of agreement of sale, um, or, or a promise, basically, that we're closing on it.
So, so, yeah, uh, uh, I'll take a look at it when you share that, you send it over to me, Brian Smith, good guy.
Okay.
Uh, the HOP, one way or the other, we have to have, and it has to be there.
Right.
Uh, no matter what happens, uh, the worst-case scenario that, that we use the HOP there and establish the parking lot there, if, if this doesn't come to fruition for, for purchasing the house and demolishing it. Uh, but what you're saying is that, Robert, maybe you can bring us up to date on that, I, I'm out of that to- totally.
On which part of this?
The purchase of the, uh, the, uh.
Well, we, we've, uh, uh, we finished, the loan is, is secured now.
Yep.
Um, and, uh, we're just waiting, um, to make sure that the chain of title is perfected. And Ron is into that, it's just, uh, it's, Ron, you wanna explain?
Brian, you sent us a, you sent us an email this afternoon.
When the Migliaccios bought the property, oh, let me back up. Migliaccio, the seller of the Migliaccios, okay? Uh, and let's just say his name was Condon or something, uh, Cowell or whatever it is. Dean purchased or the property was given to him by his mother and father, and I believe a sister. However, that Dean said that before you get this, mom and dad and sister have a life estate in the property. Now, when it goes to Migliaccios, the son is dead. So now it goes from his estate to the Migliaccios. So, I have told in my email, I would like to see who closed the property for the Migliaccios, whether their attorney, whether their title agent. Uh, because they would have had a deal with those life estates when Migliaccios got the property. I mean, if I was representing them, I'd say, wait a minute, before I can con- confirm that you have good title, we need to deal with these life estates. Are these people alive, are they not alive? When did they die, is there any inheritance tax due, et cetera?
Are these people alive, are they not alive, when did they die, is there any inheritance tax due, et cetera? So, my hope is that the person who closed the property for the Migliaccios addressed that. If not, they don't have good title to the property, and then we're gonna have to deal with that issue in some fashion.
And, and.
But that's where we are right now, uh, and, and Julie is gonna contact, or Robert's gonna contact the Migliaccios and give me the name, uh, of the individual or individuals who closed the property, and then I'll, then to see if they took care of this.
I think they've already provided some things to the, uh, what's it, Pocono Abstract?
Pocono Abstract is who, you know, the township is using.
But in any event.
For title work, and I spoke with them the other day, so they're on board with what we're trying to do.
Where it really stands is everybody's dead, um, but the question is, um, was there any inheritance taxes were they paid, were they not paid? That's big, really.
We have to have proof of death, even though we say everybody is dead, we need to have proof of death, and it can either be through death certificates and/or obituaries.
I think you provided.
And then we need to, we need to see if any taxless do.
Right.
Uh, because I'm not sure how the sequence of death.
Right, I'm, I'm not either.
You know, the dad die first, then mom die second, sisters die third, or the, you know, something die first.
Well, it's really, I think it, it's, what's material is just some death certificate or cert, or arbitrary for the son, because the two women who, who inherited from, who were born in eighteen eighty, it's doubtful they're still alive.
Yeah, and, and I, and I, and I believe that, and the only issue is if, if this wasn't taken care of by the Migliaccios attorney or title agent, then, and there's inheritance tax due, and I think some will be due, I don't know the amount, however. That money will have to be held in escrow until such time as the state approves of the, uh, of the return. And then the Migliaccios may not get as much as they had hoped, because, you know, they may have to be paying a few thousand dollars in, in tax, especially when you consider interest and/or penalties, but we can't, you know, that's why you do a title search, to make sure that you have good title.
But in the meantime, tw, as, as far as, uh, the two things we can offer are the, um, um, what would you call it? The, um, certificate of, uh, of intent to purchase, right, and sign.
Well, you have an agreement of sale, I think, if I'm not mistaken.
That, that is correct, we do have a signed agreement of sale that I've before.
The settlement date may be a little different, but, uh, you know.
It is, it is.
Uh, but you can say that, you know, you're in the process of extending the settlement date, because you can blame me, the solicitor, you know, cat died, I broke my fingernail, whatever you have to say, okay?
Well, and you can also.
But if you give them that, that should be enough for them to say, okay, we have a signed agreement of sale, that proves that they're gonna buy this.
And you have a loan, a document.
Yes, and, and I can provide all of this information, I just wanted to give you guys an update of where we are with the H O P in regard to these things.
That should make them happy, and if they still need something else, well, then you let us know, and we'll do whatever we can.
Now, let me, let me say, you know that, uh, after, uh, they, uh, inherited, I think, this, uh, this land, they sold a good part of it to us.
Yes, there's a.
Is that in the record?
There is a, uh, transfer to township of Smithfield, yes, there is.
Yeah, 'cause it's a couple hundred, I think.
Yeah, I, I don't remember how much, 'cause I didn't do the search, but I remember.
But if there was a transfer, there must have been, um, a title search done in that transfer.
That's right.
It could be, I mean, and we could also, if in fact the Migliaccios don't have anything, perhaps whoever closed the deal for the township at that time, whether it was the solicitor, whether it was an abstract company, whatever, maybe they have some records. But before we go back to that, I'd like to see what Migliaccios has.
Uh, if, if they must have those records, the township would not ta, have taken it without, um.
I, I wouldn't think so, but let me tell you, there are a lot of scary things used to happen way back when, so.
And that's stacked far enough.
Well, it's just two thousand eight, wasn't it? It's after two thousand eight, 'cause they didn't get their property in two thousand eight.
Okay, yeah, it's not that far back, that's, again, two years before I came on board, but.
Trust, but verify.
Uh-huh.
Trust, but verify.
Amen.
And that is what we will always continue to do, is make sure that our, our own ducts are around.
Well, who was, who was the solicitor at that time, uh, Hit, Hit, uh, Hisco?
No.
Two thousand and eight?
Hisco, brother.
No, no.
'Cause I came on board two ten.
You came on board two ten?
Well.
Hisco, no, he wasn't a part of this for some reason, that, uh.
Well, he might have just said, well, just like, I'm not a part of this now, it's, I'm not doing the search.
Right.
Pocono Abstract is the search.
Uh, Tony Williams, I believe, but, but if, either one, we should have records on it.
Well, maybe the first thing to do, before we even get back to the Migliaccios and spin them all out, is see if Lois can find that file when you guys bought the property in two thousand and eight, and maybe there's something in that file that deals with this life estate issue.
Did we get it in two thousand eight?
Well, I don't know, you just said two thousand and eight, I don't know.
Well, two thousand and eight is when they got the property, so I assume if we bought something, it was after that.
That, I don't know what timeframe it is, but the purchase of that property by the township is addressed in the master site plan that was put together, so I can find the date and have Lois research accordingly.
Yeah, it could be on ScanTech, or Trino, too, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Moving right along.
Okay, so, so we got a situation that, and, and, uh, so you, what you're gonna send to, uh, uh.
Yeah, if you guys don't mind, I will, uh, pass on the agreement of sale, uh, the loan documents and.
And which, which agreement of sale, there were a couple of different ones.
The, the most recent one, uh, that is valid, um, and the loan documents for the, uh, for the loan, uh, along with some sort of cover letter to present to Pendott, saying, yes, it is our intent to purchase this property, uh, as a showing of good faith to Pendott, so they give us the H O P that we need for this.
That's interesting, really interesting, 'cause as they said earlier, the, the H O P is, is a necessity, there's no, it stands or butts, and that's the only place it can be.
We kinda need to, to put the park in, so, uh, yeah.
Well, I assume when you close out another driveway, we should go fairly easily.
Yeah, and I, I did talk to Brian, and we spoke, um, about this on the phone, that one of the things that they put in the H O P also is that they can, you know, put in, if you approve this, we will close out one driveway, um, as we open up the other, so if they are on that property at that time, they will have access in and out for the entire time, if that is a problem.
If that's a problem, and again, uh, we're just going back to, to the fact that, uh, no matter what, that, that H O P has to be situated where, where it's agreed to be put. And, and the whole idea was to, to enter there and then eventually to, um, uh, have access to come up top where it's level, where the home, the barn is at, and then put the parking lot there. Uh, but why in God's name would they say, because if, if that, supposing we come up with something that, that is not good, not good for us, not good for the family, that owns the property and it delays it, and all I'm saying to yourself is that we still have to go forward with, with obtaining that H O P. Uh, it's critical both ways, 'cause it's not like we're gonna have access up top to, to, to the parking, it's gonna be through the se, H O P with the correct lines of sight and distance, so. So, we can't lose that, uh.
Right.
You know, get, get me his correspondence on that, I, I'd like to talk to, to Brian myself on that.
The, the good news, by the way, is with this is, that Tony does wanna move very quickly, because his wife was accepted in a, in a, um, a home, a county home, uh, so that he's planning to get out probably within the next, I think, the, the next week or so, and then slowly move everything he has out during the next month, month and a half.
Well, he ain't gonna move everything he has out there.
I mean, anything he wants, in that way.
Okay, uh, so what that means, there's probably a time constraint on that?
Very much so, Brian needs this by the end of the week.
He, we, he has to sell the house by the end of the week?
No, no, he needs the information from us by the end of the week, in order to submit the information to Pendott.
We're talking about Brian now.
Brian, Brian.
Oh, no, 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 I'm talking about Tony now, if.
Oh, no, sorry.
Because that, yeah, sure.
Anyway, he'd like to settle as, as soon as possible.
And, and, and with good reason, all I'm saying is, is, is that possible, and does he have a time constraint on how long he's gonna have that?
Uh, the only time constraint is how quickly he can get out, because he wants to get out quickly.
And, and.
No, no, the, the housing unit, did they say you got this for six months?
No, I think they, they wanna, they wanna move, uh, in a week or something like that.
Or, or maybe, maybe he would lose that, that privilege for he and his wife.
Well, hopefully not, I mean, I, I haven't heard anything this week, but, um, I've just been waiting to hear from Tom McKee, McKillan, that they want to close.
Okay, and McKe, McKillen, yeah, and they do, certainly, but, but, Ron, uh, the, the situation is now that, that the, the, the family, um, and Tony and his wife have been accepted into the, uh, Monroe County Housing Project, but I believe that they're, okay, you're fine, but you cannot own that home and, 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 and get into this, uh, into this structure. Uh, and you, uh, you are approved, but only for a certain finite amount of time. And we gotta find out what that is, because that would, and then, uh, if, if, if it's the intent to go ahead and buy this and everything's in order, and Ron gives us the, the, the green light, uh, maybe we could, just as we're gonna do through Brian and Pendott, uh, we could say, all right, here, here's the intent, we've got everything in order, can you flee, we're gonna buy that house, uh, uh, can you allow them to still have access to it? Can you keep it for them, dedicate it to them, 'cause they're, they're, they're very competitive.
Uh, yeah, I, I do wanna say that in the original sale agreement, we might have given them something like ninety days to, to move out.
They did.
Um, so that might be a thing for that, but when I reach out to them asking about the title, I can ask if there are any time constraints on the sale of the property on their end also, so we can.
Well, but my mo, my biggest concern really is that, uh, uh, Tony's situation, uh, and, and with his wife, Dan, is that they were, they were accepted to move in.
Yes, right, and I want, I want to find out.
But that, that only lasts, what's, yeah, how, what is that, it, hey, look at, uh, you got a month to do it, but you gotta get rid of the house, so.
I, I think it was like a week or two to do it.
Oh, jeez, so then, how do we intercede, how do we say the intent is still there?
Well.
Just as we're doing with Brian.
And, and when I reach out to them to find out about the title question, I can call and find out what that specific timeframe is also, um, and then if we can get both items cleared up, we might be able to resolve both of these.
Call, call about the timeframe.
Call Tony.
Okay, well.
About the timeframe related to the title thing, and while I'm on the phone with him, ask him also about the timeframe for moving out that he needs to abide by to move into his other residence.
And the other thing is, another call would be to the HO, Monroe County Housing Authority, saying, listen, it's definitely the intent, it's already been voted on, it has passed, and it's just a matter of putting things together, but this house will, is going to be.
I think that's the important call.
That's the call, that's the call.
Yeah, I, well, I don't know, uh, to, remembering that we are on speaker in a public meeting, and I don't wanna get into the weeds on, on other people's private business, we, I can certainly reach out to Tony and, and, you know, say, hey, we need to intercede and reach out to them along your path.
And Julia, it, it, this is all public, uh, I mean, for goodness sakes, uh, this is, we've taken the loan out, uh, we need the bank to buy the property, it's been approved, there's a seller's agreement that's been approved, um, this is all public, and, and Tony and, and Dan are aware of this, so. I'm just saying that we get in touch with the housing authority and say, listen, this is our intent, and again, it's the same reason that we're gonna use with, with Brian and Pendott, okay? And, and just say, uh, and here it is, what, how can we assure that, that their space will, will, will not be taken away from them?
I, I understand, my reference was more of that I would err on the side of caution, uh, I would not want other people, like, I would not be personally making any conjecture hypothetically, and, and speaking to the law, of, hey, I have this heart condition or this brain condition or.
Nobody's talking here, but we're not talking any of that.
But I, I think what Julie's.
All we want, it's a simple call to the housing authority, you, I'll make it if you don't wanna make it.
But I think what Julie's saying, she just wanted to tell you, see, what the situation, what the situation really is right now.
Right, and, and if we need to take that call and we can, I'm more than happy to, yeah.
Okay. But please keep me in the loop on this, all right? Okay.
Yeah, and after, once I have an update.
All right.
You'll all be updated.
Okay. All right.
Item D.
D, how many items, yes, uh. Yeah, I N D is a motion to approve the twenty twenty contribution disbursement, uh, as approved at the, uh, at our twenty twenty, uh, in the twenty twenty budget, uh, to, um, share monies with Shawnee, Marshalls Creek, Delaware Water Gap Fire Companies, and Suburban EMS, and Buschville EMS. And I'd make a motion that we make those payments as approved in, in the, at the reorg meeting in January of twenty twenty, in the bu, or the budget approval.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, now we have three, uh, three discussion things here, do you wanna, let's see, what else is on this? Okay, we did get that, um, we have a motion, I'm gonna go down to H, motion to approve finalizing of the draft of the December thirty first, twenty nineteen financial statements provided to us and prepared by Kirk Suma and Company Limited.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion, all in favor?
All right.
Aye.
L S A grant application request, maybe I'll take a little discussion. Uh, River Road E D, let's go to that, uh, you, you provided, uh, previously, you provided a pretty good, uh, map of, of what's gonna be entailed. I have one question, you'll answer that as far as I'm concerned, i, i, is, is what's gonna be included in next quarter?
Oh, yeah.
In that area, okay?
And the, the biggest things to look at there are not River Road, but all these other things that we wanna, put in an amendment that are just corrections or amplifications.
Which will have Ken Wolf back out in the woods for another week.
Yeah, but, you know, it's, it's questions about, um.
Yeah, and there, uh.
Shooting range, you know.
An indoor shooting range and, uh, I, I, I don't know how this came out of way, I was doing a little, maybe, research on, um, ranges of this sort. And I was talking to someone who, uh, actually is involved in this kind of stuff, and, and there's a place in Easton, I think, Julia, I was sharing that with you the other day, uh, where they're, they're very, 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 uh, the state restrictive on, on aeration and, uh, uh, airflow and, um, emissions from the building, shooting ranges mostly. So, that itself is gonna come into play, and that's good, it's not on our table, I don't think, uh, except to say just that they'd have to, uh, concur with it.
Yeah, we should get some, some intelligence on that, because I could, when they put in baffling and soundproofing, required surrounding neighborhoods, but there's probably some better language for that.
Yeah, and, and I think a lot of it's got to do, I think it was actually our building code, uh, inspector, Keno, who was telling me about it, and he was involved in that because of his job, and that was one of his jobs, he said he couldn't believe how stringent, uh, the, uh, the control of the airflow in those kind of places is, and especially air emission. He was shooting a lot of guns in those places, and, uh, this one in Easton apparently is, uh, is a fairly large operation.
I guess just because of the, the powder or something.
Yeah, whatever comes out of the muzzle, I don't know. So, okay, what do we do with that then, we, uh, we just, uh, motion to continue with, uh, enveloping into the, um, the, uh, revision?
Well, should we, uh, should we make a motion to, um, have it, um, uh, codified as an amendment, I mean, what's our next step, you've got to go to plan.
Have it drafted in ordinance form.
Drafted, drafted in ordinance format, and then it goes to the planning commission, township and planning commission county for review.
So, we should say, what, motion to draft in, in, um.
Oh, a motion to draft the amendment to the E D zone.
Well, I'll make that a motion, that motion that.
Second.
Okay, now, and, and, and non原原原 has River Road E D zone, but, but the actuality is, we wanna move forward on the revision of, of the entire E D, the, E D zone.
Yeah, so.
So include the River Road.
Right, right, and my question would be, obviously, are we gonna include something in River Road, and if so, what? And if we're not, then that's okay.
And we are, and, you know, I think Robert.
We have a, we have a map of what's included.
To get some, kind of, to get some of that information, if I'm gonna redo the, the ordinance.
Here, pass this along.
Now, I have that, your, your email.
Oh, you have, okay.
Yeah, your email with the map, right?
Oh, yeah, okay.
But see, I, I don't know what that means, what properties are we talking about, I need.
Isn't it listed on there?
I need tax numbers, I need properties.
Tax numbers were on there, did they disappear?
Well, there are the five nine five six and three three seven oh, but.
Well, the five.
But those are like the ends of the numbers, I, I don't know what the beginning numbers are, I don't know what the properties are.
We'll get Ken to give you the beginning, they're all the same.
Let me know, it's just, like you said, it's the Lixey property, the this property, the that property, just, you know. I see three different properties, I see one. Cause I see three different properties, I see one here, one here, and one there, pretty much, so, there were five properties altogether. As long as I have enough to be dangerous, that's all I need. Well, we'll have Ken, Ken give you the whole owners, okay?
Alright, so, so that motion basically is, is that we will, uh, continue with work to, uh, make revisions to our ED. And, um, and then what?
Draft, draft the. Draft the amendment to make revisions to our ED zone, including River Road.
And write the ordinance. And may I have a second? All in favor? Aye.
One more off the table.
LSA grant application request. I saw a, a, a couple back and forths, and the la- the last, latest one I saw, I guess Jacob got back to us.
Pretty much saying that, uh, there is no matching grant involved with LSA.
Right, according to Julia.
Yeah, uh, that's her, okay, yeah, yeah, that was her.
Was, was L, L, LSA again, the local gaming thing or something?
Yeah.
Local share act or something?
Yeah, something like that. And today's the deadline, according to Mary Elberger, that we have to.
For them?
Yeah, to them, to get going.
Well, uh, we say, okay, get going, is there, is there any upfront costs that we're gonna be involved with?
Guess they're always, uh, pro bono, they take the fees out of the backend.
Yeah.
What do we got to lose?
No, no, no. And this game, oh, no. No, no, Ken, I'll tell you, okay, so let's, uh, let's, uh, Jacob, do you wanna make that, uh, motion?
I'll make the motion.
Alright. Motion and.
To apply for the LSA grant for the, a project, like, in the wellness park called, uh, uh, Vision Lost Trail.
Okay.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, then the three conditional use situations. Uh, let's go down to, uh, well, we'll go, uh, just today, I believe, we, we got review number one from Bouchain James, did you get that, Ron?
On the, uh, young one?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, it came in, I didn't look at it.
No, I, I didn't either.
It came in.
Well, I did, actually, I did read it, and, uh, and I went back and I looked at it again, just seeing where, where this is gonna fall apart. Some of the onus is gonna be on, on, on them, uh, to, uh, through us, get in touch with our SEO and, and to, to have them go out and take a look at, supposedly there's an existing system, source system on this lot. And we don't, we couldn't find any records of it, but again, that could go back so far, that we wouldn't have records on it. So, they're gonna have to get in touch with our SEO, he's gonna have to go out and, and make that determination, and we go from there.
Um, it's, I didn't see the report yet, but there's, is there anything of any great substance?
That's why I read it, actually, I read it twice, uh, for Robert, because I, I, just seeing.
Something that jumps off the page, we'll see how it goes. That's something that could, uh, just put a, like, is there anything meant to it?
I didn't, but, but, but I, I would defer it to, um, John and Ron.
Well, is there any chance we can get this before the planning commission?
Well, that's extensive, it's.
Yeah, what, what is going on with this young one? And I, I did not ask for this one to go on the agenda, so please stop me if there's another reason that it's on here. Um, but it is on and in front of the planning commission for the eighth right now. And the status of this application right now is that Ron has submitted a letter to the, um, asking for an extension. So the planning commission has time to review everything on the eighth and submit their official comments to you. So you guys have time to review and then advertise and then hold your period.
And, and then their engineer are professional, by the way, they say either an engineer, uh, or, or a, but not a, I don't know, not a surveyor, in fact, Smith's on there, we had that problem before, maybe it's just semantics, I'm not sure. But, but the thing of it is now, because of, uh, review number one from Bouchain James, they've gotta respond to it too.
Right.
And that's gonna take time.
Which is why we're asking for the extension.
For the extension.
Uh, because as it is right now, their application, uh, the sixty day window concludes on October twentieth.
October, yeah.
So basically, we would need to advertise now for the sixth and the thirteenth to be able to hit that twentieth deadline, uh, which really isn't feasible at this point, which is why we're asking for the extension.
Yeah, and I, I wouldn't wanna do that un- until actually the, the planning commission sends their recommendation.
Well, let me say this to you, however.
Yeah.
If they don't grant that extension and you don't hold that hearing, they've got their, they've got their project.
Well, if.
So I, I gotta advertise this like yesterday, I can't wait for them to say, we'll sign this paperwork. I'd like to get this add-in, Trapasso's add-in, and the Saloon add-in all in now, so that if they don't agree to extend, we've got our hearing scheduled for whatever date you guys wanna select now.
Alright.
You have your phone. Okay.
Now, uh, the young.
And that's, that's costly, don't get me wrong, especially if you advertise and then they say, oh, here's your extension the day before the hearing. Well, what good does that do us? Now we've advertised, you know what I mean?
Ron, when, when, when did you send that out? I know you notified us.
I sent it out on September twenty five.
And, and September twenty five?
I did it on the weekend.
It was, uh?
This past weekend, I was in there, I think that, I think it might've been on a Friday, I think it might've been on Friday, the twenty fifth.
That's right, they didn't hear from you on Saturday, I was, I was worried.
I was there on Sunday, though.
Oh, I know.
He was.
The Eagles were not.
Oh, please, the Eagles, I'm not, I'm giving up on the Eagles, I'm gonna watch them.
They won, right?
No.
They lost again, they're zero and three.
Ah, well, they won up by four.
They, well, they tied.
Yeah.
But they didn't win, they, they played for the tie, they went into overtime and they played for the tie.
Yeah, we basically lost to the Bengals.
So they tied, anyway. So, I mean, you have to tell me when you want to meet.
Would, you, you know. We'll meet whenever you want, right?
Well, the, I mean, the Youngs is the earliest, that blows out on the twentieth, uh, I think Trapasso, if we wanted at least schedule a hearing and then we'll talk about what, uh, Robert talked about, that blows on the twenty sixth, so we have a little time on that.
Trapasso will give us an extension, uh.
Yeah.
And all the other ones even earlier, the one on, uh.
I can't hear you.
All the good things you're gonna do for.
Natasha.
We should do it once talking.
Natasha blows out on October sixteen, so that's even earlier. So, what, what would be the closest meeting date to October sixteen?
It would be October fourteenth, our Wednesday workshop.
So two weeks from today.
Can you get that done?
Well, they say once a week for two weeks, and I like to try to set for two successive weeks. I like to try to separate, you know, like, a whole seven days in between each ad, but it doesn't say time. Like, when you're advertising for bids, it says the first ad has to be five days after the second ad, or whatever it is. They don't do that for here, so I could technically advertise on Sunday and Monday, that's once a week for two successive weeks.
Well, and we might be able to.
Yeah, I, I could, I could play that game if, if we have to, but I think we may have to for, for the.
Cozy.
Saloon one, the other ones, we, we, I could get an add-in and shoot for whatever you said, the twenty second or twenty.
Right, right, but we might not have to, um, the Natasha one, which is the one that expires on the sixteenth, is the one that the planning commission suggested rejecting because the application is inherently incomplete. So we might be able to send that letter, that was part of what we needed to discuss tonight.
Okay.
Whether we need to hold that hearing run, or if you think that we can send the letter rejecting.
Well, but Robert had mentioned whether or not we wanna do that, as opposed to just letting it go and getting it deemed approved.
No, no, that, not this one, not Natasha.
I don't think so. Well, then that one?
The, the.
That was Trapasso.
Oh, Trapasso, okay, never mind, I'm sorry. Alright, well, if, if, yeah, if you do that, then I think we can, we can say that you're not gonna have, uh.
Let's advertise them, I think, uh, I think our zoning office may have, uh, have you, are you aware of anything that Ken's done as far as working with, uh, the co-.
Well, so, back on the fourteenth of November, when I sent out all of this information, we were going to ask for all of the extensions, we hit that timeframe, so we didn't come up on this on the eleventh hour. Um, which is kind of where we are now.
Yeah.
And we're under the gun so badly. Um, so because of that at this point, we're at a point right now where, once the planning commission has their meeting on the eighth and reviews everything, we will already be within our timeframe for having to advertise for our meeting. Um, so at this point, you kinda need to make the, are we going to advertise? Uh, and, and really at this point, we should determine whether or not, or, excuse me, which one we're talking about because there are multiple different issues at this point that we can very easily choose.
Okay, so let's, let's go, let's start with, uh, on the top, we have time for that, so let's pick dates and we'll advertise that, that's, that's only one to hear.
Which one, is it talking about Young?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
Alright, so we, your, uh, you see, I'm looking at the calendar for October, and the second Tuesday is the thirteenth, we can't make that unless we really are trying to be cute about things. We can shoot for a special meeting on the twentieth, we can't do the twenty first, which is a Wednesday, which would be a workshop, because that's, you know, that's one day beyond the deadline. And we don't get an extension, so, if you wanna shoot for the thirteenth of October, I can advertise for that and again, do the Saturday, Sunday routine, or Saturday, Monday routine, that's once a week for two successive weeks. So, so if you wanna do the thirteenth on Young, we can, we can do the thirteenth, if you wanna do that.
October thirteenth.
That's your regular.
You can get that done?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday would be Tuesday evening meeting.
Right.
If you'd wanna do that.
And you, you, you'll be able to do that?
Well, again, I can't do it the way I would like, which is Monday, seven days, Monday, and then, or Tuesday, seven days, Tuesday, then seven days, you have your meeting, I'm gonna have to do it back to back like a Thursday and a Monday ad. So, let's say if I advertise tomorrow, I put it in for, uh, Pocono Record will take it on Monday, which is the fifth, and then, uh, we could say, assuming they take it on the fifth, then, uh, we could say, nah, this doesn't work, it has to go in this week, if we're using the thirteenth, and I'm not sure, cause tomorrow's Thursday already. Cause the ad has to be no less than seven days before.
Okay.
If we're using the thirteenth, that means the, the last ad has to go on October sixth.
What, uh?
Then we don't have two weeks, the, that's only one week.
With the fourteenth, do it just that one day, if we give you any more leeway or?
Hold on for a second. Probably not, because again, if you go, it has to be in by seven days, I'd have to have it in no later than October seventh. Now, i- if the Pocono Record would take the ad, say, this Saturday, the third, and then the seventh, yeah, then I can do the thirteenth, uh, the fourteenth.
Yeah.
Cause then it would be, it would be seven days before. So if we're doing the fourteenth, I would see if the Pocono Record can do the third and then the seventh.
Right, and, and, and again.
And then we're okay with the fourteenth, and that would be then at a work session as opposed to, uh, evening meeting.
But the worst case scenario, we, we have to schedule a special meeting, maybe?
No, I think we're okay, I mean, I, I can't see, if I get the add-in tomorrow, tomorrow's Thursday to the Pocono Record, can't believe they can't get it in by Saturday, but if that occurs, I'll let you know, you know?
Yes, because then we'll have to go right back to the.
Because they're gonna have to make a different decision as to where you wanna go with this.
Alright, so we're, we're gonna pencil it in, well, more than pencil it for ten thirteen for, uh, Young.
Yeah, ten fourteen.
Fourteen.
We're at a work session.
Okay.
So it seems that what's crucial here is getting the SEO inspection, I mean, that's a big issue, it's something.
It's, and that's on them.
They, they gotta get our guy out there to do it, right?
They gotta get, yeah, unfortunately, it's still, Dave Manta, that's good.
Well, they, they can extend as long as they want, but they do the extension, not us. They can say, you know what, let's extend to the end of the year, that gives us plenty of time to do all that, but right now, we haven't heard.
Yeah, I, I know that, uh, cause I know one, one of the brother laws, that they're very anxious to get this going cause they wanted to get this foundation in before, uh, it gets too cold.
And I could see them saying, well, let's keep our fingers crossed and maybe the township doesn't get to this and we'll go from there, you know?
Well, okay, so we, we'll try to address it, and, um, did you send a letter also requesting, uh?
To them, I sent a letter saying I'd like an extension until November twenty five, which I believe is the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. I haven't heard, again, I sent that Friday.
This is to which one?
This, oh, this is to Young and also to Trapasso.
Okay.
Uh, but we're talking about Young right now, so I mean, I don't know, someone wants to call them and say, are you gonna sign it? Not sign it, whatever, well, we may be able to make it anyway.
October, alright, so, let's see if we're, uh. Alright, Trapasso, Trapasso can use application, how you go?
Trapasso, again, we talk about what, uh, occurred here now, they don't blow out till October twenty sixth, so they're, we're in good shape.
And, and Nate Euler, but their, their engineer has already said that he sees no problem with it, in fact, he really wants to work with us. On our MS four.
I don't think, I don't think they're, uh, under any, uh, sign pressure. So, so if, if you would wanna say, okay, well, let's, we'll do this, uh, at the work session of ten twenty one, which is the next week after Young.
Yeah.
We're good for adding, because then I can get the add-in for the seventh of October, the fourteenth of October, and then we're twenty one to date the work session. So that, that works long, fine.
So we're gonna put down, then, uh, Trapasso would, would command on?
The twenty first, unless you guys say something differently. I don't think, and they were okay with time, and again, we, you know.
You know.
Yeah, so we're fine. I don't think I need to repeat, so there are any huge issues.
No, no, and, and the good news is, the, the, the only problem is, is, is the, uh, recent, uh, today's letter, review letter. It's extensive, but it's, it's, it's mostly, it, there's no stop, GameStompers in it.
Yeah.
But, but they gotta read it, and they gotta respond, and then they gotta get an SEO out there to do it. They, they, if you know who, who we're talking about, and I guess you do, um, they're, uh, they'll, they'll be there, they're not gonna walk away.
I, I don't know them, I just, you know, I just know that one of the.
Prove it, yes. Yeah, the families down there, I mean, it's the family stuff, the only situation you may run into possibly in, in the public area is the neighbor. But that's neither here nor there. Okay, so we got that, now we have, uh, Natasha.
The final one is the Saloon thing, what do you wanna do with that? You wanna let it go, not let it go, do something in between?
It's the one where the application is never completed.
Oh, not completed, wasn't even.
No completed, no nothing, 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 door.
And, and.
And I have the letter saying that your application is rejected, I did a draft, again, on Friday.
Yeah.
Sent a copy to you guys and said, okay, you want me to send this or not, so.
Well, I think, uh, here's what happened, uh, when, when he decided that, that he wanted to do this, uh, I asked Ken to talk to him, and just to explain to him, listen, it's, it's, it's a situation where you're in a floodplain. Um, for a while there, I thought it was a floodway, and that, that's just.
But you've been doing anything if it's in a flood.
Right, right, so it's a, it's a flood, in, in a floodplain, but just to, Phil, come in and, and let us know, and we'll work together, somehow maybe this can happen, cause we've done it, I, actually, with some people that you know that served on, on involuntary boards with us, had to go through the process.
You're doing it on Young, that's a floodplain anyways, isn't it?
That's right, yeah, all three of these are conditional because of floodplain. So, I would like to talk to Ken, but I think that letter should go off.
Saloon thing up, is this thing that he wants to do up and going.
Yeah.
So if it's up and going, have me send a letter saying your application is rejected, and then you can start from fresh with trying to work out something with it.
Something to make up, yeah, to work.
So, it, it, it. I mean, it is up already, who cares?
It, it's not up already.
Is it the concrete patio, is that what we're?
Yeah, well, there might be more that he wants to do, but I.
Oh, there's a lot more.
Hmm?
There's a lot more.
Well.
And I've been, I, I pulled in there the other day, alright? Just to take a look at it, I was hoping Phil was around, I didn't see him. Uh, but, all I'm telling you is, is, is that there's a lot more, the, the concrete patio that, that is, I guess it's, uh, ground level, possibly, in the, in, in the butt of the building. Oh, no, 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 there's, there's a lot of, of stuff, that makes it even harder, so he wants to put structure up to put a, a roof over this thing.
He's got a roof over it, hasn't he?
Oh, god.
Does he have a?
I, I think, I think he has like the skeletal thing hanging off his building, but, but that's all I was saying, is that
Yeah.
there is something already that, that he.
And is he using it?
I, I, I haven't seen it enough, I wouldn't know.
Yes, he, he, you know, from time to time. Yes, he, he, you know, from time to time...
So, reject this application and just start from scratch.
That, all right, I...
Because if you, if it's there and done, I mean, short of you enforcing it, saying, take it down because you didn't comply with the ordinance, et cetera.
And that's what, and that's what, let's not get to that point.
Right, and Robert said in his email, like, yeah, we've COVID nineteen and we're trying to make people make a living, not restrict their business, et cetera.
Yeah.
Because his application just said he wants a porch for outside dining, that's all it says. Doesn't go into any great detail.
Oh, shit.
So, if that's all he's looking for and that's what he has, then I reject the application and say, if you want to start again, go back and do whatever. Or he may never come back again, I don't know. I don't know what he's looking for because he's never filed a plan nor has he given any details other than a porch for outside dining.
And, and he was, trust me, uh, Ken was out there trying to work with him. We've been working with him and it, and I think it's his first cousin that started at the gas station.
Oh.
Uh, for quite some time.
Right.
And I just say, yeah, let's get that letter out and we'll start, and, and, and if we do anything, we can make it a lot, a lot easier on, on, on him.
Well, there's no question that the people who have stores and businesses are hurting with the COVID. You know, my, my brother had a barber shop in Stroudberg for forty years, shut, shut down, COVID killed him.
I got my brother, uh, lost his job for I forget how many years.
So, I understand acutely when Robert says, let's try to help these people, not what's right, what they're doing.
Yeah, yeah, well, let's not get it steady.
But if it wasn't built or et cetera, well, then maybe we'd have to do something different. But if he's already, and I don't mean in a bad way, thumbed his nose at the township and said, look, I got to do this in order to make a living, well, then it's there, let's reject his application because it's not complete, give him his money back, okay, so I need a check for that and, and I have in my letter, we'll send you the check separately, so we don't delay in that regard. And then we can start fresh again.
After the discussion came up with Natazi, I had Lynn put a stop on the check until we were able to resolve this issue.
Beautiful, thanks.
All right, so it was, it hasn't even been cashed yet.
So, we just give them...
It has not been sent. Uh, we were under instructions originally with the correspondence from two weeks ago to send it to you, so you could send them together. And after all of the questions came up, we stopped everything.
All right, so, so that's... So, when I say, the check for fifteen hundred dollars for the filing fee will be returned to you, I could say your check in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars for the filing fee should be voided in as much as the township has not negotiated.
No, no, we have, um, deposited his check.
Oh, okay.
We were in the process of, of creating another check to...
I understand, okay, I got you.
And I put it on that...
So, now...
Good.
The question is with Robert, is that, is that procedure okay with you or do you think it's good with me?
I just think we, maybe in the, in the letter or with Ken going over there, well, I'd explain it, um, we're, we're not rejecting it with prejudice, we're just rejecting it because it's not complete.
No, I haven't. If he wants to refile for a conditional use, attaching our documents...
Yes.
Uh, uh, you know, the fee wouldn't have to be refiled and we'll be happy to accept it. Yeah.
All right.
All right, so, we'll make a motion then that the Natazi application should be rejected as incomplete.
I'll make that motion. All in favor? Uh, no.
Can we get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. All right.
And then as we talk about that, remember we should have some policy in place so that when someone brings something in like this with no plan, no documents, no nothing, the deal is, we're not even accepting it today, Mr. Natazi, thank you very much, but we're not even accepting these papers today because they're not even close to being administratively complete or accept them so you don't have an issue at the front desk, if you will. But then within two or three or four days, someone looks at the papers and say, wait a minute, these aren't complete, and then you send out one of these letters to them.
Which I do have a question on. Um, chapter twenty seven, section seven oh one, D one, says that the submission date of our conditional use application shall be when the zoning officer has determined that the application is complete and all retired documents, excuse me, required documents and information has been submitted and the required fee is paid. So, if we have that in line in our zoning ordinance, is that sufficient or do we need a different resolution?
I think you're probably sufficient, but then the zoning officer has to do that.
Well, that's...
I mean...
I, I, okay.
You, you kind of do, and I don't mean that in a bad way, but then they have to say, okay.
No, no.
I'm looking at these files, it's not administratively, uh, complete, everything's going back and here's the check. You don't even cash your check.
No, I...
You come to the heart of the problem.
No, yeah.
What section was it added in?
Chapter twenty seven, section seven oh four, D one.
Yeah, be under the conditional use...
Yeah.
Application, yeah.
Okay.
And that should be for any application, by the way, now, whether he gets the subdivision and the...
We'll, we'll, we'll talk about that. We'll talk about that, uh...
Yeah.
Another time.
Fair enough.
Okay, uh, I'd like to pay some bills. This is, uh, general fund, uh, ninety eight thousand, ninety eight dollars and nineteen cents. Uh, Jacob, I know you looked at them. I didn't really get through them all that well. I just took a, a brief run through.
Sure.
And, uh, we can look at the titles that, that are on here, but...
Right, the, the primary thing, there, there's a little bit of overtime involved in that payroll because of the cleanup, and the other thing that's big is just the final installment and the payment on the twenty seventeen, I think it was, Peterbilt truck? I don't know if that's the exact year, but that's, that's what that, uh, pay car financial payment.
And did you see that, uh, that, I think Julia was, is addressed to you and I for some reason, uh, for the Peterbilt truck, uh, the, the instructions that, I need copies of both pages as opposed to one page.
Related to the recycling nine oh two grant.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've reached out to Tom Prudinsky and I have the second page. I'm waiting on the additional information he needed from E F S A before I responded to the email.
Beautiful, thank you. Okay, uh, and again, looking through as, uh, central P, uh, the paintsters, okay, health and welfare. Okay, uh, also, uh, in our park fund, uh, uh, in the amount of five thousand thirty seven dollars and forty four cents, highway fund, five hundred and twenty four dollars and twenty eight cents, lowest I've ever seen. For a total of a hundred three thousand six hundred fifty nine dollars and ninety one cents. Uh, make a motion that we pay the bills.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Uh, I think that's about it for this evening, so I'm going to make a motion that we adjourn this meeting. And I just, you know what, I just found out.
Oh, you, you want a second? Robert seconded.
Robert seconded.
All right.
All right. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.